Gracious and Heavenly Father, we thank thee for the beauty of the day, the beauty of your love, the beauty of challenges in everyday life, the beauty of our community, and the beauty of a desire to build and to maintain it for the cause that has been dear to the heart of our community for years. So bless these council members, each participant, that whatever we say and do will be to your glory, to the glory of Christ, to our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. I kind of put you on the spot there. Okay, so did everybody get a chance to read through the minutes? I'll take that as a yes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, second. First and a second, go to vote.
Jay Teetz.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Minutes are approved as written. Uh, the agenda, looks like we have one change on there. Anything else other than that? Any discussion or questions?
Motion approved, amended.
Second. First and a second, we go to vote.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Tell.
Aye.
Teetz.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Agenda's approved with the one addition. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody from the public want to comment about anything that is not on the agenda this evening? And if so, please hold to three minutes or so.
I introduce myself, in case you're wondering, what little father time is doing here tonight. Homer Dobson, I live at a mid-city geriatric and people-minded center. I think you have my house number. I come here tonight because of my concern for our community. The thoughts that I have, Mr. Mayor, are not going to be limited to three minutes. You can take that time off my sermon Sunday. But the thoughts I have are, I think, meaningful to me, and I think should be meaningful to you. And tonight, I'm not going to talk about any particular issue. My purpose in being here is to talk about our city and its image, and what we can do to be bridge builders, and to make our construction solid. So I want to begin with this that I experienced some time back in a eating place not too far from here, and an adjoining table where several individuals, and being a snoopy kind of individual, I could not help but listen to what they were talking about. And pretty soon, they noticed that and asked me, "Who are those?" And one of the individuals said, "Yeah, I remember you, Homer." And then the conversation went something like this. "You still live in Tracy?" And I said, "Yes." And one of the individuals spoke up and said, "I am glad I do not live in Tracy." That hurt. It hurt. Another individual responded, "I agree." And so I thought about that for a while, and wondered just exactly what those individuals meant. Did they mean they were happy that they did not live in Tracy, period? Were they happy that they didn't have to go to the Tracy post office? Were they happy they didn't have to go to the Tracy, we'll call it the barber shop? Were they happy they didn't have to go to the the health equipment provider? Jerry, are you sitting over here?
Yep.
Okay, Jerry, were they saying they were happy they didn't have to go to the Tracy hospital? Were they saying they were happy that they didn't have to go to any of the Tracy churches? Were they saying they were happy they didn't have to send their kids to the Tracy high school, or the grade school, or Kids World? Were they happy they didn't have to buy their groceries in town? What did they mean? And then it came to me that they were probably happy they didn't live in Tracy because of what they were hearing. And what they were hearing was disconcerting to them, and they, when they expressed it to me, it was hurtful, Jerry, to me. Mr. Mayor, okay, my vision is about shot people, so forgive me. Mr. Mayor, they said that about your town. Jerry, they said that about your town. Ugly Pete, Pete, they said that about your town. And Homer, they said that about my town, and I didn't like it. So why is that image being presented? Why are people feeling that way? So that's why I say we need to do some bridge building. Another instance, very, very successful businessman from a neighboring town, has a great, great reputation for his integrity, his workmanship. He called here to Tracy and told the individual who he was. His first question was this, "What in the world is going on in Tracy?" "What in the world is going on in Tracy?" Because what he had heard were things of a negative nature. Just a few days ago, I was told of this instance that happened to a person who came to Tracy to establish his own business, which he did. And it developed into a very, very successful business. He became a pillar in our community. But shortly after, he moved to town. An individual from right here in town, your neighbor, my neighbor, came to him to thank him for coming to Tracy. And then his comment was this, "Be sure and watch your back." Now, what kind of a welcome is that? Why should someone that we would welcome, that we would want here, that we needed here, who'd be an asset to our community, be warned, "Watch your back"? And then, just a few days ago, sitting with a group of individuals right here in Tracy, and I didn't bring this up, someone else did, about the situation that we're experiencing here in Tracy, where friendships are saying the past, sarcasm rules rather than kind words, criticism rather than praise. And this individual made this statement. "What we need is for all of those people, meaning you people, all of you people, to go, to get new people to start all over. Mr. Mayor, I'm telling you now, as I think I'm looking at you, you are not going anyplace, okay? We're going to put a seatbelt on that chair you're sitting on, and that's where you're going to stay, okay?" But why are those things being said? It's hurtful to me. Jerry, you grew up here. You're part of the community, vital part. It's got to hurt you, yeah? So as I said, as I began, I'm not taking sides tonight in any issue whatsoever. But I just want to call your attention how necessary it is for us to follow a principle three, four years and years ago, that we live at peace with one another. That we are not hurtful, we are not unkind, we are not out to do someone harm, to cause them disappointment. We're not out to do anything to their families. But we are to love one another as we are admonished, to love our neighbor. And our neighbor is the recipient of our love, and we will not, we will not deliberately hurt them. Now, listen to this. If you can't win the debate, try to take out the debater. That's an old, old saying. And, uh... Over here, I can't remember your name now.
Dave.
Dave, okay. "We're having a debate, and I can't take you out. Can't win a debate. So what do I do? I do everything within my power to take you out." Get what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's wrong, 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 wrong. And that took place centuries and centuries ago. And it took out one of the greatest, greatest young men that the world knew at that particular time. Another attitude that seems to be present is this. If you can't win the argument, then launch a smear campaign against the opponent. That happened in the life of that young man. He won the arguments. Those who were opposing him didn't stand a chance. So what did he do? They started a smear campaign. And that smear campaign cost him his life. Now, those are things that we see in our society today. But those are things that we dare not see. We dare not allow to happen to our community to destroy a oneness that should exist in building our community into what we really, really want it to be. You know, I appreciate you volunteers who serve on the city council. Young man, I appreciate your desire to come to Tracy. I desire, or I love your desire, become a citizen. And I admire you from the depth of my heart for you being right here tonight. Because you are a very great asset to the city of Tracy. Same for you, Jerry. Bet, proud of you, glad to have you here. Tony, wherever you are, over there, okay? Tony, yeah. There have been times, Tony, when I've been thoroughly disgusted with you. And there have been times when you've been thoroughly disgusted with me, and wouldn't even come to church to hear me. Thank you for being a volunteer. Here's a guy down here in the street corner, can't even grow grass on the north side of his house. I'm so happy.
Too big a tree!
I'm proud of you. I am. I'm happy you're here. And, Mr. Mayor, I am happy you moved to Tracy. Yeah, and happy you're sitting in that chair. And you're my mayor, okay? But we need to make sure that the people that are other volunteers are comfortable in their work. You know, it's easy. I don't know how many committees and what have you I've served on in my lifetime, both local, county, state, one federal. And there are times, in fact, there were many, many times, when I would leave the meeting, and I would either drive home or walk home, or whatever, and I felt good. You know why I felt good? Because, Jerry, I feel good the same way you do when you leave the hospital, when you're minnow-bressing to somebody that day. Because I said something, I did something, I saw something accomplished that was good, that was honorable, that made other people happy, content. But lately, individuals have thrown up their arms in despair. "I'm out of here. I'm out of here. I didn't come for this kind of stuff." And when volunteers feel that way, that's shameful, 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 shameful. It ought not to be. Now, I think all of you have a pen or pencil in your hand. You've got a piece of paper. Get ready. Write this down, every single one of you. You people in the audience, if you have a pen and pencil, write it down. I didn't make this up. This is an old Indian saying. Do not use a hatchet to move a fly from a friend's forehead. Want me to repeat that? Do not use a hatchet to move a fly from a friend's forehead. Okay. I was told this afternoon that I shouldn't come here tonight. But the preacher has to talk every once in a while. But I hope you take my words in a kindly, kindly fashion. Because I think, and I hope I spoke for my heart, I love Tracy. I do. And I love you people as my neighbor. And I want the best for Tracy. I always have, since 1948. Thank you again. Oh, I forgot. How long did I talk, Mayor?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Right on the nose.
The best three minutes we've had.
If I talk five minutes, that's time enough to take up an offering.
I want to shake your hand, sir.
Thank you. God bless you, sir.
You too. That was very wise words, and we all thank you.
Thank you. I'll be leaving now, so you can talk about me. Jerry?
Yes?
I'll give you that preacher hug the next time I see you.
I'll keep that in mind. You're not going to get away without it.
Thank you, Homer.
Well, how do you follow that?
Well, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Jamie Mattson. I live at 487 Second Street here in Tracy. And I went home to my Elk River house that I still have in Elk River. It's now become kind of what I would think is like my vacation home. And I was there for four days, and I can truly say I missed my town. I love this area. I love everybody in it. It feels like home to me, so... All this mirrored smearing, and us looking like idiots is really, I feel like it's my fault, but I shouldn't have to take the blame here. I was just coming in as a business owner to do a job for a gentleman as an opportunity. Any business owner, any smart business owner, looks at opportunities and says, "Let's run all that." I came to this town within about four weeks, in the dead of winter, and realized there was an opportunity for me, my family, my employees, anybody, my subcontractor, anybody that we're going to do work with, there's an opportunity for them to grow. So I thought, "Let me come here and build something." Had an opportunity to get building for little or nothing. Would I have saved it? Darn toot, just like I'm doing in our building right now. I had no ill wills to open up a business and let it crash and burn. I am a succeed, a successor. I've been in business since 1996. Have I had failures? Heck, yeah. We all have. But you know what? I wasn't going to fail, and I would never fail, because I got two daughters that look up to me. And now I got all these people in the city that come up to me and give me thumbs up and says, "Good for you." I'm like, "Okay, I guess it's worth it. Holy crap." So I'm looking at it going, "You know what? I'm here to stay. We're going to do great things." The thing that stinks about everything is I've been drugged through the mud. I do. I've been convicted, tried, however it works. "You're a loser. We don't need you here. You're not our kind. You weren't born here. Get out." That's the way these two individuals addressed me, and it really flipping hurts. I'm not a bad guy. I'm a family owner. I love God. And you know what? I do things pretty darn good. So I'm just looking at it as this gentleman, Jeff Solomon, broke laws, broke rules. He was punished. Same thing should happen to this gentleman on Wednesday. I'm not trying, I want this thing to end. I'm telling you, I got a great business. We're booming. We got so many people giving us orders. I thank everybody for their support. I knew it would be like this, but I knew, did I know it would be like this that quick? No. But I knew it would be like this. So honestly, I just want to tell everybody, thank you. And you know what? I'm going to stay here. We're going to do a lot of great things. Hopefully, you guys catch a couple of T-shirts we're going to throw out at Boxcar Days. But honestly, I do want to apologize to everybody in the city of Tracy as an outsider coming in, putting mud on our face. That's not what I wanted. But ultimately, when you look up on the internet, you see me, you see all the negativity. It's my name. That's going to be blasted forever, as well as Tracy. So sucks for us all. So let's move on, and let's move on to greater, better things. And there is going to be change next year. You know, 2020, a lot of things are going to happen. We'll see where the chips may fall. But I predict good things are going to happen. So thank you for everybody.
Thank you. I'm going to hold you for just a moment. We were, we had a public hearing that was scheduled for 6:45, and we're already behind on that. We will come back to the public comment section. But we need to hold the public hearing right now concerning Jody Anderson's variance.
It's going to be a couple hours?
No, no.
No.
No, it'll be fairly brief. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for Jody Anderson's variance.
This was forwarded on from the planning commission for the council's review. She actually wants to keep the garage on an adjacent lot intact. Doesn't want to separate it. She has agreed to build the, rebuild the siding and shingles and, you know, try to get it looking nice. I guess she's looking at potentially selling the lot later, not wanting to separate the two parcels at this point. Right now, the coach shows garages can only be on a lot if only as an accessory structure to a dwelling unit. So beans are be, taking the dwelling that's there down. This is where it came through the planning commission as looking for a variance to keep that other garage intact with that parcel with the house being gone. So Rosemary, do you want to?
Rosemary Martin from Planning and zoning. When we had decided that we were going to go forward with that with provisions, do you have the provisions on there?
I can tell you what they are. Just typed it.
Okay. The provisions are...
Five years. Five years to either build or sell on the property.
Property, correct.
At the end of five years, if neither have happened, she could request an extension at that time. She has 180 days from the time she purchased the property to raise the building, per council approval. Her 180 days started June 24th of 19, so it'll go for six months. So she has until December to raise the building.
The reason we put a provision on it was because we have ordinances in place for a reason. And we felt that we needed to put a limitation on it and revisit it if we needed to in the future, not just to give a blanket variance.
And then they also recommended allowing her till August 1st of 2020 to have the garage repairs done.
Right. So that it's a fit structure. So that's what we brought to you. We recommended to move on to the council.
So that included, like, siding and whatnot, so that it's not an eyesore?
And that it's within compliance with what our code is. And Shane can define that, if there's any questions.
Maintenance code.
Right, the maintenance code.
I think the biggest concern was the fact that this lot is a buildable lot.
Yes.
Where some of the other lots that you have approved a variance on has not been a buildable lot.
So hence the restrictions.
So hence the restrictions.
And also the timeframe on it, so that we weren't just giving a blanket variance.
Does anybody have any questions? Input discussion.
Jody, did you have anything you want to say, or?
I understood...
Come up to the podium.
Come up to the podium. Thank you. I understood that the timeframe to raise the house was one year from the purchase date.
I checked the minutes today, just so I had it. It was 180 days.
That was the council meeting, city council meeting that I was at. Must have been in June?
No.
This is June 24th.
That's when the document was recorded with the pony. So it's 180 days. This is the resolution.
I was at a city council meeting before that, though.
Yep.
And at that time, they gave me a year to raise the house.
Is that in the minutes?
The resolution.
Okay.
The city council retains the right to reassess the assessments if the property is not cleared within 180 days from transfer of ownership.
Yeah, that's the assessment that we abated if she got it down and then. That's why, and you haven't received that. You paid that in order to close, and you haven't refunded that. The city hasn't refunded that assessment yet.
Right.
So that's where the 180 days comes in, the way I remember it.
If it is not cleared within 180 days from transfer of ownership.
Then the assessments will be reapplied.
So if it's not tore down in 180 days' time, then...
Then the assessments. The motivator, the motivator there was, you got a year to get it down, but if you want to keep that assessment abated, you had to get it down in 180 days.
Which is December.
Yep. So that was the motivator for, for the city to, to back off on the taxes. So you've cleaned it up. It looks 100% better now than it has for a long time. So I'll give you credit for that. But it, that was, uh, in order to keep that assessment abatement, you have to have it down in the six months.
Okay.
Is there any further questions?
Can I get a, um, a motion either way?
Yeah.
Close the public portion of the hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Does anybody else in the, have anything to add? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll entertain motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the variance with those stipulations.
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion or questions? Go to board.
Schoens?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, motion to approve variance under stated restrictions passes. Okay, so we'll move back to the public comment section. Please step up to the podium. And thank you for your patience. I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. My name's John Colter and I came to Tracy in 1971. And, you know, um, I feel very comfortable here. I've had a lot of you in school. And I love Tracy. My wife and I love Tracy. Muriel's here because of our love of Tracy. We're never going to leave Tracy. The way Tracy has treated my wife and I and our family, particularly our daughter Emily, uh, this is the greatest place on earth. And I know because I've seen a lot of the earth. They say you can judge a community by how it treats its young and its old. And if you look at Tracy, uh, how could it be any better? I'm 70 years old now and, uh, I'm going to be in Prairie View someday. And I know I'm going to get great care. Maybe before that, O'Brien Court. I love everybody in this town. I don't really know anything much about what's been going on in the news. It seems like it's been a long time that Tracy City Council and things like that have been in turmoil. I do know in regards to this gentleman here, speaking about Jeff Solomon, I have the utmost respect for all of the Solomon family, including Jeff. And Tony's my neighbor and, uh, all of us owe Tony a tremendous debt for the service not here but before in the military. I, I, I was a teacher and a coach and a referee. And from the moment I came to Tracy, I was led by a great man named Mr. Art Marvin. And Mr. Art Marvin said, we confront problems, but we don't drag them out in the public uh, to the denigration of the school. Every time we're out in public, we're representing Tracy or Tracy Public Schools. And it's just very, very difficult for a lot of people in Tracy to understand why this wasn't handled more in private. I don't really know that much. I know Tony and I know Tony to be a good man. I know Jeff. I know Jerry. I know all of you. You're, you're good people. But how did we end up here? Much to the chagrin of some of my buddies that I go over for coffee, you know, I don't want to read about Tracy in the Marshall paper. Tracy's a great place that we all should celebrate. And I, I just urge all of you from now on, let's act like Tracy and our reputation and we're, and you know, being a teacher and a coach and a referee, I've had a lot of people mad at me over the years. 35 years of refereeing sports and teaching. In fact, a lot of my former students like me better now than when I, they had me in school, you know? But this is a great place. We have great people here. This can't go on. This has to end. And I don't know what the rules are for public meetings and that stuff, but I'm not a very politically correct guy. Lock yourself in a room. Come down to my house. I'll leave and lock you in my house and let's work this out. But it's just, it's not right. And it, it's, the only negative thing that ever happened to me and Tracy when Muriel and I first got married, she got two tickets in the same day. I don't know how that happened. But I think, I love this town, like I said, and I, this saddens me and I'm sure it saddens a lot of other people. We have to put this to rest permanently. And I, if I'm going to look at anybody, Mr. Marvin want to tell me, this starts at the top here. The upper level, levels of leadership, let this get away from them. So I love you all. I love Tracy. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Warren. I'm, uh, live over on Harvey Street. I'm also a member of the EDA Board. I have a question for the council as far as how Tony and Dave ended up on the EDA Board. Do you know how he, how they ended up being members of our board?
They were appointed by the mayor.
They're appointed by the mayor. So at any time that they don't fulfill their obligations, they can be removed simply by the mayor saying, I don't want you to be on the board anymore. I'm going to appoint somebody else.
That's not true.
All right. You can school me on that later, but they are appointed by the council.
That's correct.
Okay. The council can say, hey, we don't, we're not happy with your performance. So here we are. We're going to have another hearing to rehash the same old stuff. Is this going to be the last hearing? No, we're going to have another one for Dennis, right? So we're going to drag some more people through. There seems to be this undercurrent over the last couple of years with the, we got to get Tony out of office committee doing anything they can to get Tony out of office. They've run against him in an election and lost. They've tried to recall him and they've lost. Tony, how many times you been elected?
Three.
Okay.
Four if you count the recall.
Yeah, four if you count the recall. Okay? So it's obvious that members of this community want Tony to serve on the city council. They need a bulldog. They need somebody to ask hard questions. They need somebody to look at it through less than rose-colored gla, rose-colored glasses. Okay? So the citizens obviously want this bulldog. So there are people here who don't like Tony and don't want Tony on the city council. So my suggestion to whoever these people are is if you're not happy with Tony, run against him in the next election. There's three four-year terms and two two-year terms. And if you run, it's going to be a four-year term, correct?
This state's a four-year term.
Four-year term. So you want to run against Tony and, and run him out? Stand up and run against him. Run for one of those four-year terms. And let the citizens decide whether, should Tony choose to run for reelection or not? Let the citizens decide whether he belongs here or not. This has got to end. You know, we're getting a black eye continuously and there's a lot of great things happening with EDA and we're going to be showing some of our progress here very shortly. The last thing we need is to have our membership ripped up and have suspicion cast on the EDA. I just hope, uh, that this ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we will move on from public comment to report. Chris Larson?
Thank you. Couple of housekeeping items really. Um, at the last meeting I discussed the amendments to owner-engineer agreements one and two. But we didn't actually have a resolution on the agenda, so, um, I think there weren't any questions on it or anything. I can kind of repeat what it was about. Um, otherwise that would be resolution, uh, the first two, sorry, the numbers are 56 and 57, I think. Then the other two items would be, uh, I also briefly discussed it, but it was tabled because there were a couple of, um, questions, um, or a couple discrepancies to get straightened up with.
Numbers.
Rural development. Yep. So that was, um, the final change order for, uh, the Phase One project, which was actually a contract, um, decrease of $95,436.52. And then, um, the other item, which, since there's a little discrepancy in that change order affected the final payout amount. Um, but the final payout, um, for the, uh, for the project then would be $95,033.2, which is basically just, um, releasing the retainage. So on a project we hold, um, for the duration of the project, usually 5%, and then as we get towards the end, we reduce that as long as there's always an amount that we're comfortable with is enough to incent the contractor to come back to finish the punch list and/or if the city has to go hire somebody else to complete it, they use that money that's withheld. But anyway, everything's completed, so, um, we'd recommend approval of the, that change order and the final payment to Dunick. So that would be the next two, um, resolutions, 58 and 59.
So 58 was the $95,000?
58 would be that, um, change order number 11. Yep. So that would, reduces the contract amount to, um, or by $95,436.52. And then resolution 59 is releasing the remainder of the retainage. So final payment to Dunick for Phase One.
Okay.
So should we do them one at a time?
Yeah, we can, we can jump and do those now if you like.
So I'd make a motion to approve resolution 201956, approving the owner-engineering agreement.
First and second, any discussion or questions? Move to vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201956, approving owner-engineer agreement amendment one passes.
Make a motion to approve 201957 owner-engineer agreement amendment two.
Second. First and a second, discussion or questions? Move to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201957, approving Phase Two owner-engineer agreement amendment two passes.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 201958, approving the work change.
Second.
First and second, discussion or questions? Move to vote.
Schoens? Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201958, approving work change order number 11 dash 2017 Phase One. Uh, it's approved.
Make a motion to approve 201959, a final payment to Dunick for work completed on Phase One.
Second. First and a second, discussion or questions? Move to vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201959, approved payment to Dunick for work completed on 2017 Phase One is proved.
There's a lot of signatures for you, Mr. Mayor. Rural development requires five copies of each of those documents, originals.
That's all already.
That's all those and I, yep, I tabbed all of them. So, um, yeah.
All right.
Crack your knuckles maybe, do some extra.
I don't think it'll be me, but yeah.
Uh, and then just a quick update. Um, we checked in with Dunick. Um, they're thinking it's possible that they'll start, um, September 16th, the week of September 16th or 23rd on Phase Three. Um, they'd start likely at the intersection of Center and Hollit and they'll only do a few blocks this year. Obviously that could change with weather, um, but right now that's kind of what they're thinking. So we're going to get a pre-construction meeting on the schedule and just be ready.
But you have something to release to the public for the people that are affected by this?
Yep, yep.
Center and Hollit? Okay.
Okay. Center and Hollit, then they'll go west.
Gotcha.
From there. Yep. And actually glad you mentioned that, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, project newsletter just remind people to sign up online, or not online, but, um, contact our office. That contact information is there. If you want to get the emailed version, then you get, get it more instantly.
You want to put out that contact information?
Yep, it's been on the newsletters and we'll send out probably another paper copy of this one. And then on there, there's some information reminding people to sign up for them.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Do we know what the plan is or what they're planning on? You know, they're starting at Center and Hollit, where they're going to go and what they plan on doing this year? Is that in the newsletter?
It, it will be. Um, so we'll, we'll probably send one out before the pre-construction meeting and we'll get more detailed information during the pre-construction meeting and share that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And the bonds are doing fine?
Yeah, they're not online yet. Um, we're still waiting for kind of the final administrative sign-off from the MPCA, but, um, should be soon that they'll make the switch over. So.
That seems to be taking forever. That's an under.
Okay. Engineer long fall.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, department heads. Who wants to go first tonight?
I can tonight. I sent you, uh, a list of just full appointed things that are going on within the, the city with the EDA. Uh, getting just a couple of them I'll go over, addressing many concerns and calls from the upcoming small cities grants. I'm getting a lot of people that are, are actually starting, are wanting to start that process, except we're just not ready for that yet, but that is coming very soon. Um, keeping the ball moving on Broad Acres has been a big project. Right now it looks like a construction site out there with, uh, with manholes and water pipes and flags in every which direction. We're moving trees in the next couple of days around there and they're looking to pour the spent. Um, a lot of real estate things going on right now within the, within the city. A lot of projects on 14 and on Third Street here. So that's what I got for you. Oh, we're ready actually to, the EDA is going to be over the next couple of months, going to be given out as many as three, as the, three of the $5,000 business rewards that, uh, people that have, have started up new businesses or redid, um, buildings and a lot of, get a chance, walk uptown here and look at the nice things that are going on Third Street here. So. I think during Boxcar Days, people will be impressed with all the things that are going on. So any other questions, just, uh, let me know. Give me a call. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Thank you, Jeff. Tam?
Things are going well at the liquor store. We have a great team there. Um, we have added a part-time person to the team. Um, we're happy with our PNL statement, um, and the continued growth of the liquor store. As of, um, July, the net income for July was 5,500, um, with year-to-date income, um, of $48,220. And we also have an increase in inventory of $12,282. So we're excited about that. Um, July sales, um, 2018 was 56,000. This year we're 65,800. Um, Fourth of July was good, except that it poured on Friday. But even though, even with that, the sales were higher than last, the previous year. Purchased a few things from the Family Dollar store in town for the new liquor store. We're also working on fixtures and shelving for the new liquor store. We visited several, um, several different stores. Rosemary came with for a few of them. Comparing their shelving compared to some of the, um, some of the bits that we've gotten in from different companies. Um, so hopefully we'll finalize that within the next few weeks. we'll finalize that within the next few weeks. Um, we also need, um, we've pretty much decided on our POS system for next year and next month, we will have it on the, on the council, for the council's approval. Um, looking forward to Boxcar Day, what a great way to, to help jumpstart the funds for the liquor store, and as always, look forward to any comments, concerns, or questions or suggestions from anybody. Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, at the library, work is continuing on the basement remodeling project, it looks really good, we have, uh, ceiling and lights now, which is very exciting, um, just keep it on your radar this fall, hopefully we can have an open house sometime, would love to see everyone there. Um, summer reading is wrapping up, um, we had really good attendance for our special programs, which was wonderful. Um, went before the Lyon County Commissioners on the sixth to give an update, um, we have some new council members here, so I didn't know if, wanted to make sure everyone was aware that we do receive some funding from Lyon County to help offset our budget, so, um, they just like when we come up and, you know, give them an update once a year. Um, and then, just one more thing to note, that on September twenty-eighth, um, we'll have our antique supervisor, Mark Moran, returning, I know a lot of people will be really excited about that, um, it was an extremely popular program last time, so, that's all I have for you, any questions?
What time on the twenty-eighth, Al, do you?
Um, it'll be from five to eight, and I think that's a Saturday evening. We'll be getting a sign-up sheet here together, here together here pretty soon, so.
And is there a rough plan on when the basement's gonna be done?
Um, I, I don't know.
I, I was just wondering, they knew roughly when they were gonna have things done, I've had a couple people ask.
Yeah, um.
Nice of him to done for that deal on the twenty-eighth, 'cause he draws a crowd.
That's my dream.
He draws a crowd, he does a good job.
He really does, and it would be nice to have that kind of be our inaugural use of it, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ah, chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'll entertain any questions yet on the activity report that you received in your packet, should've been pretty self-explanatory. Um, also, received a grant for a medication drop-off box, which you see, Shane's crew got it mounted permanently to the floor over in the, uh, as you walk into the VMC towards our office, so, it's kind of built like a, um, a mailbox at the postal, they're heavy-duty boxes, so, um, that was like a fourteen-hundred-dollar grant reception for us, so, um, and I'm pleased to announce that we hired a fourth officer, part-time, started, um, Thursday when I got uniformed and got licensed today, and Peter Vu will be starting, um, on a part-time basis for us, so, first time we have had a long officer, and first time that we have, since I've been here, that we have hired somebody who not only graduated here, but lived in the city of Tracy, so.
Excellent, yeah.
Start him off with Labor Day weekend, huh?
He'll be sticking pretty close to me during Labor Day weekend, so.
Drive like fire.
Well, that don't scare him away, nothing will.
That's awesome, that's good news. Anybody have any questions or comments for Chief McDee?
Did you, uh, need us, you need our action on this mutual aid agreement tonight?
Uh, yes, if you just want to, I don't know if it is now the time you need to address that, or it's pretty standard mutual aid agreement on Omen Yoda and Marshall.
Read right to the same one, yeah.
I think we're the last ones assigned it, actually.
I didn't see it on here, but I see it in the package, so.
Yeah, I don't see it on the.
Yeah, it's in the pack.
On the agenda.
Yeah, it was in with my stuff, I just.
It's in with your department head.
Okay.
So, yeah, didn't get it out as a separate item, 'cause it was in with this department head report.
If you want to discuss it amongst yourselves, it just needs the, uh, council's approval and the mayor's signature, I believe.
Okay, can, we can add that, we can do that, yeah?
Yeah.
We don't have to ha, actually have it as an agenda item that we.
Well, I'd, I'd make a motion to sign the law enforcement mutual aid agreement, I see nothing in this change order, the last one.
I'll second.
First and second, is there discussion or questions? Okay, move to vote?
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teagues?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, motion to accept, is that what it was?
Yep.
Accept the law enforcement mutual aid agreement passes. All right.
Would you just, uh, sign a copy then and leave it with?
We get it at the, at the conclusion of the meeting, do you need it right now?
Pick it up from Dan later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks. Public Works and Airport.
A little admin too, I guess, no? Um, as far as the report, I don't know if anyone had a chance to read through that, um, did you have any questions there? We hit potholes really hard last week, um, the tune of just shy of a hundred tons of patch mix. Um, did some work out at Swift Lake to fix, uh, some of the sidewalk down to the dock that washed out, uh, it started last year in the flood, and this year kind of finished it off with the spring and everything, water running around it, so, we're gonna do a little riprap around that, and also hopefully that stays. Um, other than that, this week, we're gonna be busy getting ready for the big Labor Day weekend, started street sweeping today, and, um, probably do a little bit more pothole patching, uh, the really bad ones at least to get through the weekend and continue this fall, so. As far as the admin, just, uh, started working on the budget, uh, probably, gonna think of a budget meeting time for next meeting, sometime after the, between the two September meetings, I know in the past we've had a budget workshop, so, if you wanted to start thinking about that, and then maybe come up with a date by the next meeting, um, maybe go through that, it'd have to be finalized at the last meeting in September, so, um, time's coming close, I know it's making admin, it's not working as good as it normally does during the previous years, um, just 'cause of timing, but, I mean, usually we have the department heads present for the councils, so, I think instead we'll just have them, any questions you may have, we'll have a special, special session, budget session, um, we'll have the department heads available to answer any questions you may have there, so.
A working meeting?
Yep, like a working meeting type thing, so.
So between the ninth and the twenty-third?
Correct. Um, so, if you want to just start thinking about it, we can set it at the next meeting, but, um, as far as, if you want to have a date for a working meeting, um.
For sake of time limits and advertising for and stuff, maybe we should just set a date.
We could do it tonight, if you guys are comfortable with that, too.
How much time?
Well, I'm gonna be out of town a couple days, I, well, depends on what time you'd be having the meeting.
Most of the department heads are round during the day, otherwise, I don't know if it works, do it right after.
I'll be out of town from the fifth, sixth until the twenty-third.
Well, that just wipes out every day.
Well, that pretty much covers the entire time.
You're gonna be there just in time to approve the budget.
I'll be back by Sunday, the twenty-second, but, if you guys want to meet on Sunday, we can.
I don't think we don't.
We're gonna be cooperative.
Where's Homer, he tell you we can't do that on Sunday, it's a day of rest.
I, I'm flexible, I was, I was just, for the sake of continuity, I was thinking the sixteenth, but it could be any day of the week.
Is that, uh?
Could we email, could we email potential dates to either Shane or Diane, 'cause then that would give me a chance to check my work schedule?
I'm open, you're open, Dave, are you open?
Yep, like on the sixteenth.
So you guys are the limiters, so why don't you work with them and, well, so, figure out your dates, and they can email it out to us. And put it on the carousel, right?
Can we just shoot a mass email out, and then we can put it on carousel?
That's sufficient for notification? Yeah.
And then, I'd love to.
Yep, post it.
Post it on the door. So, it'll be all for plenty of time.
Everybody good with that?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm wide open, so.
Three days is all we need, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm pretty much open as far as I know, so, and if I'm not, well, I'll just have to change my schedule.
Do we have a time of day you're looking at?
Um, I'm, I'm tied up, I'm tied up in Marshall till five every day, so, I can push it to four-thirty if I need to, which would put me here at five, so.
For Jason and myself and Dale.
They're gonna be all at the fire hall, and Monday night's not a good night for it to.
Monday the sixteenth is, uh, the mandatory drill night, seven.
I didn't think of that, so, maybe Tuesday would be good.
As I say, Tuesday, you wanna move it to the seventeenth, then? Well, I guess it's up to Jerry, she's gonna check her, her schedule, but as far as time of day, um, does six work for everyone?
Yeah, I think six is good.
Okay, six o'clock on the day of Jerry's choosing.
Well, it's also budget, you know, for, for my work, and I have to go to Sioux Falls and everything, so, I just have to see what those dates are.
Okay, yeah, and then, just let us know from there.
Okay, and as far as, uh, reports, um, do you guys have any other questions, concerns?
No, I think, uh, how are we doing with the flying breakfast stuff, is that?
Should be ready to go, um, we'll be stepping up, starting Wednesday.
Okay.
Getting the grill, which should be here on Thursday.
Awesome, thank you.
If volunteers want to help, we'll have, we'll always have openings, so.
Oh, you got a big crickets on that one. What time of the day?
Uh, it starts, we usually start serving around seven, and then I go stop over at the time.
What day is it, Saturday or?
Monday.
Monday?
Labor Day.
Oh.
Before you leave.
Let me think about it.
No pressure, Coop.
Usually they're at five-thirty in the morning if you want. Well, now you don't spare the walk.
Yeah, that's a way to step on your own toes. Okay, anything else for department heads, did I miss anyone? Okay. Petitions and requests for communications, uh, Accuso, is that, is that correct? If you'd like to step up, sir?
Good evening, everybody.
Don't hate me.
Good evening.
I got some additional information, if anybody would like it, about the upcoming twenty-twenty census, I am Jim Accuso, and we have twelve partnership specialists that we have in the state, um, and I'm here to talk about the upcoming twenty-twenty census, which is around the corner for everybody. Um, I'm based in St. Paul, and I do cover the southern part of the state, and I do appreciate that you did work with us in twenty-ten, I have some information that you helped with a B-counted site, and also the, uh, among Alliance Church did help promote, um, the twenty-ten census, and we also worked in the library as far as a training site for training, training our new hires. What I'm here tonight is to talk to you about forming a Complete Count Committee, now I did send out some, uh, a Complete Count Committee guide that I believe, uh, may have gotten to everybody, as well as there's a pamphlet that's a shorter version in all of your folders, talks about the Complete Count Committee.
This one, yeah.
Uh, so my presentation tonight, I'm gonna start off with a message from our director, Marilyn Sanders, Marilyn has been with the Bureau for forty-two years, she is the Regional Director of the Chicago region, which is now an eight-state region, when you worked with us in twenty-ten, you would've worked with us out of Kansas City, the Kansas City region, the Bureau has consolidated from twelve regions down to six, and now Minnesota, and all the contiguous states there along the Mississippi River are now, are now part of the Chicago region, which has grown to eight states. Everyone knows that it is a constitutional mandate that there be a census every ten years, and, um, what is at stake with the census of counting, of course, counting everybody in all fifty states, people of all ages, races, ethnic groups, citizens and non-citizens alike, alike, what is at stake, of course, is apportionment in the House of Representatives, as well as distribution of at least six-hundred-and-seventy-five billion dollars in federal funds in the out years, uh, in the upcoming decade, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-thirty. There is a handout in your folders which depicts fifty ways census data are used, um, you may know that many, many programs, federal programs, are based on population count for the distribution of funds, so for all types of, of federal programs that many of the citizens of Tracy likely take part in. We have redesigned the census this year, in twenty-twenty, we have a number of outside forces that we did not have to deal with in previous decennials, and briefly I'll touch on them, of course, you've got a mobile population, you've got renters who move much quicker than they used to, they're hard to count, they have, uh, uh, mobile phones, as opposed to in the past they had landlines, um, we've got declining response rates of ser, uh, in surveys of all types since about the seventies, so we need to reach out to people more and more, so the Complete Count Committee is trusted voices, community members, talking to community members, uh, about the benefits and the needs to participate in the census, of course, they have the understanding of it, and once you form the Complete Count Committee, we will train everybody and bring them up to speed on a lot of those benefits. Uh, you've got, uh, folks that are inundated with more technology and more information, um, and you've got a number of different, um, living environments and a diverse population that we didn't have in previous decennials, and so we are up to the challenge of meeting those, uh, meeting those concerns. We have redesigned the census here in twenty-twenty, first, we established where to count, we worked with Lyon County, and maybe perhaps someone here in the city to make sure that all of the addresses, all of the city-style addresses here in town, and I have your population at about twenty-one, forty-two, does that sound right? Give or take, right, okay, that's the number that we have, that's the number that we have on our website. Um, so once we establish where to count, um, the houses that are gonna get the actual mailer in twenty-twenty, uh, uh, in the spring of twenty-twenty, um, then we're gonna motivate everybody where how to respond through the Complete Count Committee, through the trusted voices, through a national advertising campaign, through all types of different outreach, uh, different programs that we're gonna have, and then we're actually gonna count the population beginning in spring of next year, we actually start, uh, in, in January in remote Alaska, in February, we're gonna reach out with our group quarters operations, count folks that are in dormitories, jails, prisons, senior homes, and the like, we'll get that information from you or the county, so we can make sure that when we reach those homes, that they get counted, they have a choice, uh, a choice of five different ways to count the, the residents of their facilities, um, and that's prior to the actual mailer that's gonna go out, so one big difference this year is every home is not going to get a paper questionnaire, every home is gonna get a mailer directing them to either go online, or pick up their phone, and have their, have their ten questions answered that way. If, in the event that someone does want a paper questionnaire, we can get it to them, but that's one way that we're saving money, so everyone will get a mailer based on those city-style addresses that we have here in Tracy, um, and then that, that will come out in a, that'll come out in a staggered fashion, beginning in March, folks that do respond to the first mailer won't get the subsequent mailers, but those that don't respond at the various stages will continue to get mail from us to encourage them to respond, and then if, if, uh, at the fourth mailer, they will get a paper questionnaire, after the fifth, if they still don't respond, then a census worker will, will knock on their door, or, uh, call them on the phone to, to encourage them to respond. Uh, it's kind of a double-edged sword, those census workers, we want to have residents of Tracy to be those census workers, much, much like we want the, the members of the Complete Count Committee, so we do want to hire locally, we do have jobs, um, we did get some help from you early on in promoting the fact that, uh, applying for jobs, um, with, they are flexible hours, they pay well, it's all online at twenty-twenty census dot gov forward slash job, so we encourage everybody to consider, uh, going online, filling out an application, and I've got a little more information on that. And then once we need to do after we actually do our non-responsive. And then once we need to do, after we actually do our non-response follow-up, the actual knocking on the doors, which is gonna end in about August, about this time of next year, then we need to tabulate the data and get it to the President and to Congress. This just shows that we've, we're using more technology this year, so we're not having local census offices around the state as we did before. We are gonna have three-area census offices, Minneapolis, Rochester, and Duluth, and then we're relying on more technology. All of the census workers that we are looking to hire will be work-from-home positions, so not only are they part-time flexible hours, but they will be working from home, using computers and using smartphones, and then conveying their information in that way to us. We do take cybersecurity very seriously. This is the first year that we are gonna be collecting the data online and through smartphones. You know, we have been the nation's number-one data collection agency for many years on the mainframe side, and this year, we, we understand the concerns of doing it online through, through our online systems. We have double and triple encryption, and we also have a continually evolving cybersecurity plan, and I can go into that more in the training, but just to let you know that we do take it very, very seriously. These are the jobs that I mentioned, so around the eight-state region, we're looking to hire recruiting assistants, clerks, supervisors, and IT, and this, again, this is, this depicts how it's all done online, it's about a 30-minute process. In the past, we used to go over to the library or the workforce center, and people had to sit for a three-part test, you had to pass the first part to move on to the second and third part. That's, that's no longer, it's online, you answer 33 situational judgment and biodata questions, fill out an application, go into the pool. We're looking to have a pool of applicants of about 40,000 in the state for about 5,000 positions, so we do take this very, very seriously, and we're, and we're encouraged by local communities like yourself. I know Lyon County is considering forming a county-wide complete count committee, so counties can form them as well as, so as municipalities, so Tracy can do one as well, and I, and I would, I would encourage that, if you could consider that. These are some of the key dates that I talked about, right there in bold type is April 1st is Census Day, and that is the date where people will note on their forms when they either call up or online, where they lived or resided, and how many residents they have in their homes on April 1st. So if they fill out their form in March, or if they fill it out in May, they're referencing April 1st, so that's the date that we will count, count residents, and we have for many, many years. That's codified in the law, April 1st is Census Day. We do work with tribal governments, state and county municipal governments, there are a number of different partnership specialists like myself that do call on all of those groups, as well as churches, schools, and colleges, businesses, business leaders are very important to the Census Bureau, they use census data all the time. Perhaps a business leader or two on your complete count committee would be a good idea, something to consider, as well as a member of the media for, for some of the op-ed articles that we have, drop-in articles, we'd, we'd love to work with the media to get the word out here in Tracy. Forming a complete count committee mayor is as easy as a commitment letter signed by you that goes to the Regional Director. We don't need to have a ordinance or a proclamation, however, you can do that, but we just require this year a commitment letter, and then asking you to name a liaison who we would work with, and then that liaison then works to form the complete count committee. We give you the framework in which to, to conduct your complete count committee work, but we're not gonna direct you one way or the other as to, as to what you would do, 'cause you know your residents, you know, you know the lay of the land here in Tracy much better than we do. So again, we would give you the framework and would appreciate you working within that. So you do the, you do your own local outreach efforts, and then you provide the leadership and support, those two bullet points there. And those, your residents are what we consider census champions, and then they work as trusted voices in the community. Again, they're, you know, again, like-minded people talking to like-minded people instead of, you know, someone from the government or someone from the state. We will provide the training and support, as well as a number of different tools that I'm gonna go into briefly in a minute. This, this graphic here is in the guide that I sent you, it's kind of an example of who can be included on the complete count committee. Again, those are the many, many circles that your residents operate in and can conduct their daily lives, health department clinics and hospitals, social service agencies, the library, business offices, and nonprofits, and the like, Chamber of Commerce. So again, those folks can act as your census champions as well. Your complete count committee does not have to be 20, 15, 20 people, it can be whatever size you determine it to be. So again, it will have some information on some of your hard-to-count populations too as well that we will go through, go through in the training. So the complete count committee then does share, reinforce, and localize the message, you can use media and social media, we'd like your help in recruiting for jobs. We do work with nonprofit organizations around the state, Minnesota Council of Nonprofits is one organization that we, that we do work with very closely, 'cause a lot of the programs that they administer, of course, the funding is based on population count, so statewide population count as well as local here, county and township and census tract. We have data that shows that based on our previous surveys, and you may know that the Census Bureau does a number of different surveys year-round, the American Housing Survey, the American Community Survey, the Current Population Survey. Current Population Survey comes up with the number that you hear the first Friday of every month unemployment-wise, so there's census workers that are out collecting that information, and then we give it over to the Bureau of Labor Statistics and they, and they put out that number. We also work with Justice on Crime and Victimization Survey, just to show that we do a number of different surveys, and in those surveys, these demographics can be hard to count for their own unique reasons. Many times, children under five are missed in, in the decennial census. College students we have to reach out to as part of our group quarters, so we work with the, we work with Marshall, we work with Mankato, we work with the U up in, up in the cities and in Duluth to make sure that the college students are counted on April 1st where they live or reside, and that they're not double-counted and counted by their parents at home. So that's, that's, that's one area that we do is specific outreach, the homeless, we have a special operation to count the homeless a couple nights before Census Day. The language constrained, we have outreach this year to 59 languages. The sent, the actual questionnaire is in English and Spanish. The online portal and the, and the phone portal are 12 additional languages, and then there's 47 additional languages. We're, we're gonna have language guides and language cards that census workers can use in the field. Millennials can be hard to count, you know, they're just, they're just coming on board and understanding their civic responsibilities, so they can be a little bit difficult to reach, much like in voting. The, those that experience poverty and, and live with disabilities, seniors and veterans can be hard to count for their own unique reasons. So again, we have, we have this data that shows that these groups need, need additional outreach, additional messaging, as well as your snowbirds. Your snowbirds need to know that when they leave in the fall, they need to make sure that they, that they mark down that they're residents of Tracy and that they do get counted here. So that message helps to get out early, but when they return in April, you can still reach them as well, but it's, you know, it would, it would be a good idea to reach them early on. These are some of the phases of our communication. Right now, we're in our gear-up phase, we're gonna engage everybody beginning in November when our national communications campaign launches, educate everybody when the, prior to the mailers going out, encourage everyone when the actual mailers do go out, March through May, remind those who didn't respond in our non-response follow-up, and then go around and thank everybody. We do have a mail participation rate map, this is indicative of all the counties in the country. Minnesota was second in 2010 in participation, and the city of Tracy, now in 2010, your participation, self-participation dropped 4%, so you were 88 in, in 2000 and 84 in 2010. So that's a downward trend that you'd like to reverse, or you'd like to be very cognizant of, just, so, so folks responded without any additional outreach there, so you would like to reverse that as well. We have another tool, our Response Outreach Area Mapper, which, which tracks data based on the American Community Survey, which is the old long form. I don't know if anyone here in the room remembers the long and the short form of the census right in 2000, so that turned into the American Community Survey, but this gives us all kinds of rich data here. So on this box, with any of our tools, when you hover over Census Tract, you'll get all that data for that tract, and here in this tract, Census Tract where Tracy resides, you have an 18% non-response for the American Community Survey, and there's all kinds of demographic data here that can be depicted with the slider bar or expanding, expanding the box to let you understand, you may have to reach out to seniors, or you may have to reach out to renters, or you may have to reach out to your mom community, you may have to reach out to homes where English isn't spoke, is spoken, and not spoken as a primary language. Again, there's internet connectivity, there's all types of information that we collect on the American Community Survey, which is available through this tool, and again, again, these are all online at census.gov, they're not, they're not private, private network, and we go through in the training how you can get that information. So wrapping things up here, we'd appreciate if you could help us with providing training space, however, I do do training around the, around the counties and around, around the state. We like to have communities combine forces for training, if we could do that, you can share some information that way. We provide all the materials, it's about a three-hour training, and we look forward with, again, if you could help us establish the complete count committee, and we can work together as a team. A lot of the materials that I handed out today are all available here up on 2020census.gov, which is all types of, the flyers that I handed out there, we are on all of the social media channels, that's our jobs link, there's a census, census.gov homepage, that is where everybody can go to. And I am finished. Any questions that I can entertain?
That was a lot of information.
It was a lot. And we have, you have the PowerPoint, so I can leave this with you, again, you can go through this. But again, Mayor, what we're asking is that if you, if you could consider naming a liaison who could form the committee, and then the committee would then just work to create awareness and get information out that the census is safe, that it's secure, that data's not gonna be shared, that key message that, you know, per Title 13, we can't share the information that we collect with any government agency. We can't, we won't, you know, if we were to, under penalty of law, we could all face a five-year prison sentence or 200, up to $250,000 fine, but we don't share information with any other government agency. We, your data is, your demographic data is separated out from your, from your, from the other information, you, you, your personally identifiable information is separated out from your demographic data, and then we crunch the demographic data, and that's what gets released out on our websites and the universities and the like. So that's one of the messages.
What do you, what do you do with the PII?
The PII stays secure for 72 years, so if anyone here does any genealogical studies, you know you can only get information back to 1940 now, so that's how the, the PII, you know, doesn't get released for 72 years.
So with the size of Tracy and like with our participation rate in the past, how many people would we need on like the, our committee, roughly?
Maybe four or five, again, Dave, so we would look to see if you had particular pockets of, that weren't responding, you know, again, you may have, you know, some of those hard-to-count demographics, it may be, may be seniors, you know, it, it may be veterans, you know, as seniors that are, seniors that could be challenged using computers, they need to know that they've got the option of, of picking up the phone and getting their, their questions answered this year. So this is the first time we're gonna have, we're gonna have live operators answering questions.
When do you need your liaison?
Hmm?
When do you need your liaison?
Uh, as soon as you would like, so if you, if you, something you could consider in the next month or two, we could get your complete count committee started, you know, the sooner the better.
You don't need it tonight, though?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Just making sure?
Yeah, well, tomorrow I'm heading back to Pipestone, I, I met with the county administrator of Pipestone a couple months ago, tomorrow I'm gonna address the complete count committee there. Gonna meet the mayor of Sleepy Eye tomorrow, I'm gonna go over to Winnebago as well, as the second trip to Winnebago is forming a complete count committee, St. James is considering one, Laverne has one, so if you were interested in maybe talking to some of the, some liaisons from the other cities, I'd be happy to hook you up with them as well.
You're getting a lot of windshield time.
I do, I am, and I like it, I like it, yeah. Drove through a little bit of rain today, and then it got nice, and, and now I'm headed to Pipestone, and as long as there's no ghosts in the hotel, I'll be good.
There is.
Weren't last time, I didn't get hot water, but, you know, so. So again, my card is in the folder there, I have email and phone number, I'd be, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I'll send a follow-up letter to everybody about this, any directions on the complete count committee, and then maybe follow-up in a few weeks, would that be good? Maybe after Boxcar Days?
Sure.
Okay.
Won't you stop in and see us?
I'd love to.
At Boxcar Days.
Okay, well, it's, it's, I'm gonna be at the State Fair, so I've gotta run a booth at the State Fair.
That doesn't compare to all the...
Well, I'm a train guy, so I go, I go way back.
Probably get on the tilt-a-whirl here, so.
So the Southern Pacific came through Tracy, huh? Why did I think it was the Chicago Northwestern? Chicago Northwestern, too, oh, multiple, of course, back in the day, multiple railroads, right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Does anybody got anything?
Questions from anybody?
Well, I thank you for braving the highways in the rain and...
I enjoy it. Roll the windows down and just, and I go the speed limit, I learned that too, so. Well, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, consider appointing EDA member Darren Pedersen.
Darren here applied, and I called some of his references, of course, I've known Darren since he was little. Couple things that we like about Darren is he's raising a young family right here in town, he's got a stable, good job here in town, he's part of the fire department, he is a part of the ambulance crew, and one of the reasons that really I liked in his application council is, is that he wants to get more involved yet in the city of Tracy, and that's absolutely what we need out of not only young people here in Tracy, but any people in Tracy, is getting involved a little bit more than, than what we have right now. So that's what my recommendation is to you, and we're looking for that, a, I don't know, I guess, I'm just looking for you to, after you've read through that, and your decision on Darren being our next EDA person that we're looking for, and I'll continue to look for another one yet. So anything else we need to do with that man, Shane?
So I'm guessing this is to fill Mark Seeger's position.
This would be to fill Mark Seeger's spot, I, I would like to have him in the next meeting, and then we can decide, 'cause Mark, when he left, it was the, he was the co-chair, so I would like to address that at my next, I have it down on my agenda for addressing at the next meeting. I wouldn't wanna put Darren into that spot, so we would have to figure that out from there.
So in the motion, just address that as to fill Mark Seeger's term out, and I'll let you know when that, when that...
Darren, do you have anything to say before they...
Any questions for me?
Like getting up early?
What's that?
You like getting up early?
Depends.
Did he tell you what the start time of the meeting is?
Not on Saturday mornings, right?
Or he didn't warn you?
Yeah, he knows. 6:45 every other Wednesday, or, so, any, just to make sure that we're, we look at, you know, he's got a job to get to too, but we're usually done by, I try to be less long-winded lately and get everybody out of there by five to eight, don't I, Tony?
Yeah, sometimes.
Five to eight.
So thoughts?
I'm for it.
I'd make the motion to appoint. Well, you have to appoint, and we have to approve.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to get some more youthful perspective. So, yeah, so I make the motion to appoint, or just...
Just appoint and then they vote.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm for appointing Darren Pedersen to the EDA Board.
To complete Mark Seeger's.
To complete Mark Seeger's term.
Thank you.
Gotta get the words right, it's all in the words. So, yeah, I will make that appointment.
May I wish you to approve it?
Second it.
First in a second. Any further questions or discussions? Let's go to vote.
Peterson.
Hi.
Teigs.
Hi.
Town.
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mayor Devers?
Hi, welcome.
Thanks, guys, and I look forward to serving on the board, so.
I'll get your, before you leave tonight, if I can get your email address, even if you gotta go, give me a call and or send me a text with your email address, I'll send you some things for the next meeting. 6:45, week from this Wednesday, so it's the 4th of September.
Sounds good, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being patient tonight.
Yeah, you get to sit through all of us just for that.
That was on purpose, I was gonna jump before, no, not.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you. All right, legal issues, the RD financial paperwork. Now, this one, I work out of the RD office in Marshall. RD office in Marshall. I don't have anything to do with their products or services, but I do work out of that office. So I discussed it with Jeff Van Buren, who is out of the Wilmer office, and we agree that it's probably best if I do not participate in signing the paperwork for RD, just to make sure that there's not even the appearance of a conflict there. So what I'm proposing, and why I asked for this to be added, is that we can make a decision to have Pro Tem do it, or Shane can do it as the administrator, but just so that it's on the record and the council all agrees on who's going to sign that paperwork.
Just a single signature required on that paperwork, or is it more than one?
It's just a single signature. But multiple.
Yeah, well, yeah. I'm well aware of that.
So then, anything RD from here forward, I would not be involved in signing that paperwork. It would be the responsibility of whoever the council decides.
My next question would be, any change, or say we decide tonight to have the administrator do it, by changing administrators, when we finally hire one, isn't anything else have to be changed, or just the title only be enough?
The title should be sufficient, yep.
Well, in that case, just for ease and continuity, you know, I'd make a motion to allow the city administrator to sign all the paperwork for the RD funds after the council has been briefed on what he's signing.
Yeah. Should we, should the council have approval of that, then, or just a brief?
Oh.
I would think an approval.
Yeah.
Generally, there's approval anyway.
Okay. All right. Yes, that's right. It would go through that process before it came time for signature. So, very good. We have a second. Any discussion? Go to vote.
Peterson.
Hi.
Teigs.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Towel.
Hi.
Mayor Demers.
Hi. So I will recuse myself from RD financial paperwork, and it will be handled by the city administrator. That passes. Thank you. We've handled our resolutions. Consent calendar, municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage and Sanford Health.
I'd make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, without Sanford Health, and the accounts receivable.
First and second discussion. Go to vote.
Towel.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Teigs.
Hi.
Mayor Demers.
Hi. Municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage and Sanford Health, and the municipal accounts receivable.
Make a motion to pay breakthrough beverage.
First and second discussion. Go to vote.
Teigs.
I can't.
Oh, sorry. Tony?
Hi.
Good towel.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Demers.
Hi.
Make a motion to approve Sanford Health.
First and second discussion. Move to vote.
Teigs.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Towel.
Hi.
Mayor Demers.
Hi. So that passes. Unfinished business hazardous properties, 220 and 236 Third Street.
Last council meeting, you had requested that I reach out to the Department of Health. I did so. Their process is similar to what we approved at the last meeting by resolution to deem it a hazard, give a 30-day notice. I guess I know there's some stuff in the works going on, potentially, but with that building, but I don't really see it having redundancy, being we already deemed it a hazard, just let it ride the 30 days and...
Because that would wind up giving them more time if they got involved. It'd be 30 days from their date, too, so.
Yeah, might just push it out longer. So I would say we're on the right track with where we're at with it, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything that we could do to expedite that process, you know.
But in a situation like that, they said they could step in and, being they got a, you know, somewhat health-related establishment, you know, right next door with the common wall. He said if there's a separation in the two, you know, say it was four or five feet of airspace between it, he said they can't really do much unless it was residential. But being it's commercial, you know, and it's got that common wall, then that's how they can, they can fight it that way. But if it's just a standalone building and it's commercial, then there's really nothing, I think, really to deem a hazard in the health side of things, so.
TDC land offer.
So I enclosed a memo. And I kind of talked about the budget and how things were going with, as far as pushing off the closing of that property. I did review the budget and where we're at. We would be, based on the current expenditure, we would be able to do that right away. I don't foresee any issues with things coming up, you know, in the rest of the three months we have, just about three months left we have of the year.
Like come out of one of your public works funds?
Yeah, probably the water utility. We actually have water mains and stuff through that easement, anyway, so. That's just a recommendation. If you guys want to continue to wait till the end of the year, I just figured I'd keep you informed of where we're at there, and if you wanted to take it off the agenda.
I think we've got the ability to pay for it without having any budgetary issues. I think we should go ahead and do it.
I agree.
You know, I'd make a motion then to purchase the land from the TDC adjacent to the Public Works Building for the $5,000 and split the survey costs and do it at their convenience.
First and second, any further discussion or questions? Move to vote.
Towel.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Teigs.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Demers.
Hi.
Motion to pay the land offer from the TDC passes. Lift Pathways Grant Program.
Jeff, I'll let you touch on this. Jeff reached out to the Lift program and brought up some information on that, so I'll let him touch on that.
As requested from the last council meeting, I've reached out to the Lift representative regarding the liability for the equipment to be stored, because the council and everybody involved wanted some kind of paperwork, so we wouldn't have a liability of this simulator that would be out there eventually. They indicated to me that they currently do not have a liability policy for situations like this, but now, after we brought it up, actually are looking for a policy like that. So they're going to get back to us with whatever kind of paperwork they could have. Also spoke to Chad Anderson, the superintendent, and where the simulator is located right now is at the high school, and he is completely fine with Dave Alguer having a key to the simulator itself, using of it, and he would, we would have nothing to do with that. That would, he would work that out with Dave Alguer, and so we would have no responsibility with that. Chad did feel it also. There was a good thing that there would be some separation between that and the current computer work that's out there. I worked on that a little bit, also, just a couple of phone calls, talking to Chad. We wanted to see if we could save a little money by maybe having the industrial arch class maybe go to the, do some of the work out at the airport to separate the two systems, the simulator and the, they would not be able to do that this fall for sure, because they're building a three-car garage out there for a project right now, possibly in the spring. So you'd have to decide whether, whether you'd want to go through with it now with the estimated cost of what Shane had given, I think it was $5,000, that, or wait possibly until spring, when the school would possibly put their effort into it. The Lift program, I did find that out. Again, I think somebody had brought it up before. There, the Lift program won't pay for that separation. That's not a part of the grant.
Did he say why he felt there needed to be a separation?
Well, it was more on the line, he didn't really want the separation completely, but once I explained to him, when we discussed it, it was one thing that I didn't know right away, that that computer system out there has been stolen once before, and then also that computer system is vital to the, to the airport and to the funds that come in on a yearly basis. So you're going to want to keep that separate.
It's a security.
It's a security thing. It's for the weather, and I don't know. What else does that system do, Shane?
Weather, and it submits weather out to the National Weather Service, and then, of course, there's Wi-Fi for the pilots to use for their flight plans available, and then their flight planning computers there, too, so.
Besides the bill for separating the two, and there's plenty of room out there in that building, and nobody, nobody wants to build onto it, but I can tell you, Chad is, feels that's the right place for it, is out there, but he has no problem with it staying at the high school. The Lift program, I think his name is Tom, he would really like it out there. There is also, I reached out to a couple of community members, too, and people that deal with the airport, and just having it out there and using it is probably the right place for it, too. Just not, if you're wanting the help from the school for, to divert some of that cost, that's not going to be any time in the next few months, for sure. So you will have to decide when you want that, when you want that done, or if you want, I don't know when Shane would have, his crew would have time to do something like that either, or you'd have to contact, contract that out.
And that's what the numbers are based on, so.
Was that contracting out?
Yeah.
If you wanted me to, I could.
If the school, if the school did it, we'd still have material costs.
Material costs, yes.
So, you know, how much are we really looking at saving if we wait?
Dave, you got anything to add with that?
I guess, I think Jerry and Dave are out there.
I think if we closed off that opening, it'd be a good secure area. I think you've looked at that, Jerry and Dave.
That's why I was asking why Chad wanted it separated, or if it's...
He just felt it was just a good idea. In the email, he just let on that it'd be a good idea to have that separated, but it doesn't mean anything to him one way or another, really.
Well, because the people using it are not going to be in there alone. I mean, the instructor will always be with the student, correct?
Correct. Or myself, yeah. Somebody's there all the time.
And, I mean, the computer has to be accessible to the pilots when they come in, so we can't take it away from the window. I mean, so we're not going to make that any more secure. The only thing we would be securing it from would be from Dave and his students. And I guess I'm just wondering if we need to spend $5,000 on securing this computer that's not going to be any more secure from the public than it already is, except for from the instructor and the students.
And how much is this computer?
Well, it's still going to stay where it's at.
But it's a standard kind of average computer, yeah. It's not anything special.
No.
So we're going to spend five grand to secure a $1,500 computer?
I mean, I think we need to do a little secure in that one spot by the window to make that whole room a little more secure, that people can't get into it without a key. Because right now, there's a way to do it, but...
The FAA, actually.
That would cost a piece of board or plexiglass. I mean, do you agree, Dave, that maybe we're out there?
What we're going to say with the FAA? FAA actually thought, for being this remote location, and if there's money down the road to actually put some kind of video surveillance out there, too, just because what goes in and out, you know, it's kind of secluded and just for the aviation safety side of it. They have brought that up in the past, and that would be another thing. You know, if someone's breaking in, you know, maybe that'd be something to help.
That'd be a good investment. They're not that expensive.
No, you can buy, you can buy those systems for a couple hundred bucks.
So could we do that in lieu of the $5,000?
Yeah, that's an option we could do.
And put the board, board of fiberglass to cut that, block that off? It'd be well worth it.
It's something we could probably try. Like Dave was showing me, it's like we could put a piece there somewhere to protect that part, and do we go and spend 500 bucks on some type of video?
It wouldn't even be that.
Yeah, I think we should invest in our security.
To put like three cameras out there pointing at that?
Security would be an M&amp;O eligible expense. That is something that they'll cover. So, I mean, that's a route we can take, too. I mean, obviously, you're going to catch them after the fact.
But at least that serves more of a purpose for the money than $5,000 for a wall and two doors. I mean, I just, I think we can do this a little more economically.
We could build a wall and make the airport great again.
But I think, I think we should maybe go out there and secure it, like Dave was showing me, and then look at a video security system that would submit it up to one of the city computers that if we needed to go look at it, we can look at it. And that would be, and that would be probably 500 bucks or less. And it's like, if that doesn't work, then we can build a whole new.
But in the meantime, you go out and get out and start getting training and everything.
Right, and then you could move the whole system out there, and it's done. It's a place to start from.
Is that a motion?
We could network, we could network the cameras to...
Right.
To us here, so you wouldn't even have to actually be out there. You can monitor.
So I would make a motion to secure the door, the way we were, the way Dave was showing me, and then just to look into a video surveillance system to transmit the information here, so if we needed to look at it, we can look at it.
We should put a limit, then?
Under $1,000.
I was going to say, I was going to say 500.
Well, I'm assuming it'll be that, but.
Did you say, did you change, should the FAA might pick, pick that price up?
FAA won't, but M&amp;O would.
M&amp;O, one of them?
Not the whole price, but 700% of it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'll second it.
It's still going to take us a good month before we can get things in place with Labor Day and everything else.
That's fine.
Right.
That'll give us time to find which security thing we want to use, too, so.
So we're going to set it at 1,000, then?
Well, no more than 1,000, just because Lord only knows that we're going to run into, so.
Gives us some wiggle room.
Yep.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further question or discussion? Move to vote.
Towel.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Teigs.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Mayor Demers.
Hi. So motion to put up that, is it a wall, or how would you best describe that?
Secure the door.
Secure the door and look into the video surveillance passes.
Thank you.
New business, administrator hiring status.
I just put this on here. Obviously, they closed the last ad on, I think, the 21st of August. Guys kind of individually peeked through them. Obviously, they're not public at this point, but just wondering what you guys' thoughts are on taking, running with what we have, or if you want to run it for a couple of weeks, or, you know, whatever you guys decide. It's up to you guys, so.
I hadn't had a chance to look at them, so.
I would, my personal opinion is I would run it another couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think we kind of rushed. I mean, I think we've got some candidates that I'd like to interview and everything, but I think we also were just in such a, I don't know, hurry to...
Optimistic rush.
Yeah, that I think it was a pretty aggressive timeline.
Paul was very aggressive.
That I think we just need to take a step back and see if we get any other applications here, because that's not a very long time for people to see it and to apply and everything. So if we push it back.
I don't know. I think personally, I'd open it for another month, or, and then with a caveat, or until filled, and if for some reason something comes up, you know, then you can go through those, your reprocess and get it done before the month's up. You know, it's... I, you know, it's...
Well, and the only concern I would have with that is we have a couple that are possibilities, I mean, you know, so the longer we stretch it out, then you have the chance of losing those that you've already got, because, you know, I've been in that position myself.
If nobody's contacted them yet, then you've probably got that possibility already. I mean, they were expecting a contact for the open house on the 23rd. Nobody contacted them, said that it wasn't done?
No.
Get a hold of them, okay?
I, I sent an email out to all the applicants, just let them know that it's going to be a discussion at the meeting, and then we'll let them know after the meeting on how we're going to move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then, yeah, then it'll go two, three weeks, it'll be fine, so...
And I'll, I'll let them know that we're going to open it up for a little bit longer to, you know, add to the applicant pool and... And then do you have a, do we have a final date, end date for the next round?
Well, this one close out when, on the 20?
21st.
1st, so, and they've brought, they've taken down the ad, right?
I haven't looked on the leads.
We would have to...
21st.
So we'd have to repost that?
Whatever you think.
But it also said it was open.
Or until full.
See, I think he had notified if it was filled or not.
So we'll just have to change the deadline on, on the 21st or whatever.
So the ad's still posted then?
I, I didn't read.
Okay.
I can verify that in the morning, but...
Do we just close it on like the midnight of the 22nd?
Well, or do we?
If we went two weeks, that puts us on the 4th, which is right after the Labor Day weekend, and I think that's probably not good because...
I'd stretch it out another week probably.
Yeah, so how about the 11th?
11th of?
September.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Place to start from.
Yeah. We can either extend or just go with what we have.
And we have the meeting on the 9th prior to that, so we can make a final at that time and decide if we would really want to close out.
So do we, no, we don't have a committee set up right now to narrow them down.
Okay.
They can't be made public until they're finalists. So I guess, I don't know how you want to set up that committee, if it was a couple council members and a few people from the public, or, or what your thoughts were on that.
What'd you do last time?
Last time it was the mayor, me, Jeff, and Shane that did.
Four of us, right?
Yep.
That one seemed to work pretty good.
Or another suggestion, have everybody go in and rate them on their own, take their time, start the apps, and then do a, whatever type of rating form you want, on a one to five scale or whatever, and then Shane can tally up, and the top three are the ones that you bring to interview.
And do like an open house type thing before the interview?
That way, everybody's got a...
I kind of like the idea of everyone having something put into it.
That way, yeah.
Yeah.
That open house is nice too, it's, that way you kind of give, you know, open house to the public.
Yep.
The way Chris presented it on that emergency meeting, you know, he said that, you know, he could rate them from the public, so you could take, take that in consideration, you know, during the interviews for those finalists too. I guess you'll have extra input that way, too, so...
Okay, so we'll be looking at an 11th for a closeout and an open house on what, Friday the 13th?
I wouldn't set the open house until you get through it.
Yeah, I would, I would let us figure it out and then...
Okay.
I would actually wait.
Well, the reason I ask is because we have a meeting two days prior to that, and we don't have another one for another two weeks, so...
It could be on the 23rd unless you want to have a special meeting for interviews.
That might not be a bad idea either.
It might, it might clean up, keep the business separate from the...
And, and I'm good with that. So you...
I think we could set it on the 9th knowing what we have for a pool of candidates. We could set the open house after that.
Who won't be here for that meeting?
He's going to cause trouble again.
So he's on the interview committee then?
Yep, and any other duties we can find.
We want to maybe wait till after the 20, you said you'd be back 23rd?
Yeah, I'll be back.
They'll be back the 23rd.
Why don't we close the apps on, oh God, I hate that, Friday the 13th.
Just another day.
I know. On Friday the 13th, and that gives us that following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for us to get in here one at a time, look at the interviews or the applications, rate them.
When do you want to have the open house?
I think you should give them a week notice at least.
Yeah, depending on where they got to travel from.
It'll be the end of September.
27th.
27th is a Friday.
We're going to give COO time to come in on like the 23rd or 24th and, well, if we, you're back the 22nd, you'd have to make sure you're in here on the 23rd sometime to go through them all, so we can get our lists on the 20, then we could notify them that the 27th, make sure that works.
That we would have the open house on the 27th?
Yeah.
Well, and if we put that in the ad again, because we had it in the ad that there could be an open house, if we put that in there, at least who's ever all applied will have their calendar semi-cleared, hoping they're one of the finalists.
Yep.
And then
So...
we could notify them like on the 24th, couldn't we?
Yep.
Because we'll pick the top three by the 20
Yep.
3rd or whenever you get back.
23rd is a meeting night, yep, so...
Come in early and do that too, so...
That should work.
So we want to close it out on Friday the 13th then, rather than the 11th?
Friday, yeah.
All right.
I should close it at 1:13. 13:13.
And who lived at 1313 Mockingbird Lane?
The Munsters.
That's right, they did. Trivia question of the day. Okay, so we will extend it to the 13th.
So does that meet all our deadlines for notification of meetings and everything?
Yep.
So open house the 27th, if I heard correctly?
Ten of them, yep. Everyone good with that?
Yep.
As the record show, was unanimous. Okay.
We have a meeting time, open house and meeting time, interview time, I guess. And then time between interviews, or if we're just going to do them in a row, or...
On the 27th I won't be back until, until 5:00. But you can do open house for 4 o'clock, 3 o'clock to...
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00, and then do interviews after that, because there's going to be three people. Three or four.
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00.
I think 3 hours is kind of long.
I think that's a long open house.
4:00 to 6:00 open house, and then interviews started like 6:15 till 4:00 done.
Okay.
Is that darn work thing getting in the way?
Open house 4:00 to 6:00, then interviews.
I'll have direction.
All right, so mayor and council communication. I have a little tidbit from the League. They wanted us to share at our meeting. So Senator Bill Weber represents our city, the state legislature, has been selected as a League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for 2019. The League's Board of Directors recognized a total of 34 legislators this year, including 20 House members and 14 Senate, for their actions and leadership on a wide variety of legislative issues of importance to cities across our state. The enclosed letter describes the specific reasons your legislator was chosen for this recognition. A copy of this letter and printed certificate was sent to your legislator last Thursday. Please share this recognition with your city council and the public at your next council meeting. We also encourage you to share this information with your local newspaper. And the enclosed letter is as follows. Dear Senator Weber, on behalf of our 833 member cities, I want to thank you for the efforts this past legislative session and to recognize you as the League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for 2019. League staff and many, and member city officials appreciate your accessibility and your consultation with us on legislation affecting the cities. Specifically, you authored legislation to restore LGA to the 2002 level. You also consistently author strong legislation to highlight city challenges in the implementing of environmental policies and regulations. Furthermore, our member, membership appreciates a routine consultation with the League staff and members on legislative, legislation impacting local governments. Our members know that in order to be successful in serving our common constituents, state and city officials must work together as partners to reach solutions that meet the unique needs of rural, suburban, and urban communities all across Minnesota. City leaders also understand that without the support of legislative leaders like you, this state partnership would not be possible. To acknowledge your contributions, last session, mayors of each city in your legislative district will receive notification of your recognition. A press release will also be issued to media in your area. City officials and League staff look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Sincerely, Michael J. Mornson, City Manager Hopkins, President, League of Minnesota Cities. Anybody have anything else? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Yep.
Good towel.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Demers.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you everyone.